To the President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we please have a roll call of the holdover board members?
Dr. Pike?
Here.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
For present. At this time, we will elect a temporary chairperson. I'll entertain a nomination for temporary chairperson.
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Rhodes.
Mrs. Rhodes. Are there other nominations?
I've moved the nominations, please.
Levi, Mr. Miller has moved that the nominations be closed. The second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
We can't second it.
No, you can't second. I'm sorry. That's correct.
That's why I'm shocked you didn't vote.
Thank you. A second from the holdover board members, please.
I'll second it. I don't know if I might want to second it, I think.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. Rhodes?
It would be appropriate to have a motion to cast unanimous ballot in favor of Mrs. Rhodes.
Do I hear a motion to that effect? Levi, a second, please.
Second.
Josie, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Voice vote?
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed?
Unanimous.
That motion carries unanimously. We'll go ahead and read the certificates of election next. This time, I'd like to read the certificates of election. These are from the County of Westmoreland. Certificate of election. "We, the undersigned members of the County Board of Elections of said county, hereby certify that after tabulating the votes cast at the municipal election held on the eighth day of November 2011 in said county, it appears that Ken Alt was duly elected to the office of school director-at-large for a term of four years for Southmoreland in the county aforesaid." And it's signed by the Director of Elections, Mr. James Montini, and the County Board of Elections. "We, the undersigned members of the County Board of Elections of said county, hereby certify that after tabulating the votes cast at the municipal election held on the eighth day of November 2011 in said county, it appears that James Beistel was duly elected to the office of school director-at-large for a term of four years for Southmoreland in the county aforesaid." And it bears the same signatures. "We, the undersigned members of the County Board of Elections of said county, hereby certify that after tabulating the votes cast at the municipal election held on the eighth day of November 2011 in said county, it appears that Mike Vance was duly elected to the office of school director-at-large for a term of four years for Southmoreland in the county aforesaid." Signed by the same individuals. "We, the undersigned members of the County Board of Elections of said county, hereby certify that after tabulating the votes cast at the municipal election held on the eighth day of November 2011 in said county, it appears that Amy Love was duly elected to the office of school director-at-large for a term of four years for Southmoreland in the county aforesaid." Signed by the Board of Elections Director, James Montini. "And we, the undersigned members of the County Board of Elections of said county, hereby certify that after tabulating the votes cast at the municipal election held on the eighth day of November 2011 in said county, it appears that Jason Polakowski was duly elected to the office of school director-at-large for a term of four years for Southmoreland in the county aforesaid." And again, signed by the members of the County Board of Elections and Director James Montini. At this time, could we have a roll call of the list of all legally elected school directors, please?
Mr. Alt?
Present.
Mr. Beistel?
Here.
Mr. Vance?
Here.
Dr. Pike?
Here.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Here.
Mrs. Love?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
At this time, I'd like to introduce the Honorable Judge Christopher Feliciani, who will administer the oath of office to the newly-elected board members. Your Honor, yes?
The newly-elected members should stand and raise their right hand.
Actually, before you do that, I just had a couple of comments. Mr. Patonic told me I had thirty minutes to make a presentation. Just kidding. Perhaps the most important obligation we have as adults is to support, educate, and to instill moral values and principles upon our children. To successfully meet this obligation requires an incredible effort on the part of parents, teachers, administrators, and last but certainly not least, the school board, which is willing to listen to the voices of concern and provide the most effective, state-of-the-art educational experience possible for our young children. With this in mind, as I am about to administer the oath of office to each of you, I charge each and every one of you with the responsibility of dedicating to your position to which you have been elected, always keeping in mind the highest values, expectations, and always providing the most efficient educational experience to those children and families which you all serve. And with that, if you would all stand and raise your right hand, and if you would just state your name. I do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. So sworn. Congratulations.
I would ask the new members not to subscribe to the oath in front of them so that the judge can sign it. And we did them in duplicates so that you could keep one as a memento of tonight, and the other will become part of the official record. Please use ink.
Putch.
Please use ink.
Instead of pencil.
I think I typed it at the bottom line.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure.
Board. The floor is now open for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Mike Vance.
I'd like to nominate Levi Miller.
Do we have any other nominations? Hearing none, I move that we make a -- someone will make a motion then to close the nominations for the appointment of President.
So moved.
Seconded?
Aye.
Seconded. Okay, those nominations for the office of President are now closed. We will now have a --
Voice vote to close.
We will have a voice vote to close the nominations for President.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. We have a roll call for the election of President of the Board, please.
Mr. Alt votes for?
Levi Miller.
Mr. Beistel votes for?
Mr. Vance.
Mr. Vance votes for?
Mr. Vance.
Dr. Pike votes for?
Mr. Miller.
Mrs. Kaufman votes for?
Mr. Vance.
Mrs. Love votes for?
Mr. Vance.
Mr. Miller votes for?
Miller, Levi Miller.
Mr. Polakowski votes for?
Mr. Vance.
Mrs. Rhodes votes for?
Mr. Vance.
Mr. Vance is the new President of the Board by a vote of six to three. Mr. Vance, the meeting is yours.
Did everybody get theirs?
No, I didn't hang up.
Just thank you for being elected President, and just look forward to having this year ahead and doing many great things for the students, and hope we can pull together as a board and be united and just overcome the obstacles we're going to have this year. And just, again, thank you for your vote and looking forward to the year ahead. So we'll go on to election of the Vice President of the Board. Nominations for Vice President?
I'd like to nominate Levi for Vice President, Levi Miller.
Hearing none, a motion to close the nomination of the appointment of Vice President?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Kaufman.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Voice vote to close nominations, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? I'm sorry. Any opposed? Unanimous vote?
Call for unanimous ballot.
Anybody have a motion to cast unanimous ballot by the Secretary?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Kaufman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Now we move on to school board meetings for the 2012 calendar year. It's recommended that the monthly planning sessions of the Southmoreland Board of Education and the monthly regular business sessions of the Southmoreland Board of Education be held each month during 2012 as per the attached schedule at 7:00 PM with the annual reorganization scheduled for Monday, December 3, 2012, at 7:00 PM in the Southmoreland Administrator Building, 609 Parker Avenue, Scottsdale, PA. It's also recommended that the Secretary is authorized and directed to give public notice, including advertising, the schedule of public meetings not less than three days before the first meeting. Need a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Miller, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes. I have a question on the motion. I was wondering if there's anybody that would be willing to change the calendar for January and February from the second Thursday to like a Tuesday or Wednesday, because I know Shelby Kahn, our student rep, really enjoys being here and has enjoyed the meetings she's been to so far, and she has the girls varsity basketball. Those two, well, on Thursdays, but she doesn't come to the planning meetings. She's only involved in the regular meetings. I didn't know if there's interest in changing those two dates or not. So I'll throw that question out to the floor.
So what day would it be?
January 12th and February 9th are the two dates that conflict with her schedule.
So it's only January 5th, but then when would the Thursday meeting be Tuesday, the 10th, or Tuesday?
What would you recommend? I'm not recommending at this point, but it's the 2011 calendar. Right now, we have the regular meeting for January 12th, which would be a Thursday. Wednesday would be 11th. Tuesday would be the 10th. On February is the 9th. Wednesday would be the 8th. Tuesday would be the 7th, if there's interest.
I have no problem.
Anyone else?
If no one has a problem with it, I'll gladly move to amend the original motion.
You?
That's enough days in between.
Is it an administration that works?
It works for some of us, and some of us it doesn't.
Okay, well.
Do we need to know now, I guess?
If you're going to decide on a calendar, yes.
Who can't make it?
But the regular dates are okay. You're okay with the regular dates?
Mr. Miller, did you amend your motion?
I did not until, unless I was checking. I really hesitate to, at least from my part, and I mean, it's a majority, whatever the majority decides here, but I, if it cuts out or if it conflicts with an administrator's schedule, so that, and there are, there will be things that conflict with all of our schedules at certain times, so we all, that's a given that we know already.
And I'll be honest upfront. It might conflict with me because my daughter's playing on the team, and I enjoy watching her play, and you only have so many years that your daughter plays in sports, so it might affect my schedule somewhat, but just to be upfront.
Is there enough time between Thursday and Tuesday to do whatever you need to do for, like if we go to the 10th, that's just, do I have time to go to the next week to make it into voting meeting?
That's a step. It's moving things along at a pretty quick pace, yeah.
That's too hard?
What if we go to the poll?
I work at the pleasure of the board, so if that's what the board decides, we'll get it done.
What if we go to the poll?
That's up to the board to decide.
Is that your schedule?
Well, that would be another, that would be another way of looking at it. An option would be simply to move both of the dates. I guess this would be back a week.
The 12th and the 19th.
Well, where you move, you'd go to the second Thursday for the working session, for the work session, and the Thursday for the voting session, but I don't know. I bet.
I don't think that solves the problems.
Basketball's on Thursday. That's right, yeah.
So further discussion? So, can we, are we going to vote? A motion has not been amended. You have a motion and a second, so you need to vote on it.
One could be to vote on the motion. If it fails, then to look at an option. Would that be a way of moving along?
Correct. Any more questions or comments? Okay, take a vote. The motion is that the planning sessions and the monthly business sessions be held each Monday during 2012 as per the attached schedule, with the reorganization meeting on December 3 at 7:00. Now, this is the divorce vote, so, right, so take a voice vote.
This is the way it is, here.
Yes, that's the motion. So, those in favor of the motion to go with the schedule in front of you, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Let's just do a hands up just to get an official number for the record. All those in favor of the schedule in front of you, raise your right hand, please. Five. All those opposed, raise your right hand, please. Four, so the motion passes. So move on to board appointments. Legislative chairperson? It is necessary to appoint a representative from the Southmoreland School Board to represent the school district in the legislative action program at the county level meetings. Here, she should present legislative updates to the board regularly and should prompt the board to submit suggested items for the PSBA legislative platform. Nominations for the legislative chairperson are now open.
I'll nominate Mr. Miller. Is that what you were this past time, Mr. Miller?
I did it this past year, yes. And I'm open to it, but if somebody else is interested, I'm also, yeah.
Are there others? Call for motion to close the nominations?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Kaufman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Unanimous? Motion to take a, cast unanimous ballot by the Secretary?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Kaufman.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Kaufman. All those in favor to close nominations, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Unanimous?
Motion to count.
Motion to take a, cast unanimous ballot by the Secretary?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Kaufman.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes. All those in favor to close nominations, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Unanimous?
Motion to count.
Motion to take a, cast unanimous ballot by the Secretary?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Kaufman.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous? PSBA regional cabinet? The Executive Board of the Pennsylvania School Boards Association Incorporated has expanded representation on the regional cabinets to include a representative from every school board in the region. The representative will be this board's key contact with PSBA and share reports and other relevant education-related information at regular meetings of the Southmoreland School Board. Nominations for appointment of PSBA regional representative are now open.
To nominate Mrs. Rhodes?
Any other nominations?
Can we close the nomination?
Motion by Mr. Miller to close nominations, so a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Unanimous? Now, we're going to ask, take a vote for the Secretary to cast unanimous ballot. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Miller, second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mrs. Kaufman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous? Newspaper of general circulation? It is recommended that the board designate The Daily Courier, whose office is located at 127 to 129 Apple Street, Connelsville, as the daily newspaper of general circulation in which district legal advertisements will be placed in accordance with Section 106 of the Public School Code and School District Policy Number 5. Need a motion? Motion by Mr. Beistel? Second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Voice vote, please. No, roll call. I'm sorry, roll call.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes.
Adjournment of reorganizational meeting, convening a special meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Kaufman.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous? Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Beistel?
Here.
Mr. Vance?
Here.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Here.
Mrs. Love?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Shelby Kahn?
Morgan Seriany?
Citizens comments? Don't have any? Approval of minutes, please? It is recommended that the board approve the minutes of the November 3 and November 10, 2011, meetings.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes? Second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Kaufman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Unanimous? Finance, fund accounts? It is recommended that the board approve the bills that payable and accounts receivable for 2011.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Miller? Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Beistel? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes.
Old business, there is none. New business, SRC E-Rate procurement, operation of leased digital transmission service at gigabyte speed. It is recommended that the board authorize the Mennescent City School District as the lead applicant for the Southern Region E-Rate Consortium to submit FCC Form 471 and other E-Rate forms to the Schools and Libraries Division of the Universal Service Administrative Company on behalf of the Southmoreland School District for the 2012-2013 funding year. Motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Kaufman, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. Roll call, please.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes.
Marching band trip? It is recommended that the board approve a trip to Williamsburg, Virginia, and Washington, DC, from Friday, May 4, 2012, to Sunday, May 6, 2012, for the Southmoreland Marching Band. There was information on your packets from Mrs. Gore about this trip. Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second?
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Miller. Roll call, please.
Question on the motion.
Question on the motion, sorry.
This is at no cost to the district.
Correct. Roll call.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes.
Executive session. Going to need a motion to adjourn to executive session for personnel, please. Recess. Recess to executive session?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Kaufman, second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll be back, aye. All those opposed? Personnel, Assistant Varsity Girls Volleyball Coach resignation? It is recommended to the board, except with regrets, the resignation of B. Jarvik Burke as the Varsity Assistant Girls Volleyball Coach, effective immediately, and authorize administration to advertise the position. Any question? I'm sorry, motion?
Shelby.
Motion by Mr. Beistel? Second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Kaufman. Any questions on the motion? Roll call.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes.
Baseball coach? It is recommended that the board approve Brian Shipley as the recommended candidate
It is recommended that the board approve Brian Shipley as the recommended candidate for head baseball coach for the 2011-2012 school year pending updated clearances.
Motion.
All right, one second.
Can you use his middle initial, just because I heard there's a lot of Brian Shipleys out there?
I believe it's Brian W.
Brian W. Shipley?
Yeah.
Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Alt?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Any questions on the motion? Roll call.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Motion goes nine to zero. Long-term substitute in the cafeteria?
It is recommended that the board approve Charlotte Problik as a long-term substitute in the cafeteria for the remainder of the 2011-2012 school year at a wage rate of $9 per hour.
Motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Miller, second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Pike. Any questions on the motion? Roll call.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Additional paraprofessional SES autistic classroom?
It is recommended that the board create an additional paraprofessional position for the SES autistic classroom and authorize administration to post the position.
Motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Miller, second.
So moved.
Second by Mr. Beistel. Any question on the motion?
If on this, usually when you do this, it says post and advertise. That's where the other ones are written. Is this one just going to be?
We're just going to internally post this. We have sufficient numbers of a candidate pool in-house, so we're not going to advertise it, correct? Thank you, though.
Roll call.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
At this time, we'll go with the student representatives' report, please.
Starting off, we'd like to congratulate the November 3rd scholar Grace Weaver and the November 3rd Southmoreland students. On December 9th, the Southmoreland Basketball Kickoff Point will be held at Southmoreland. On December 13th, the Southmoreland High School Winter Concert at 7:00 PM at High School will be performing will be the chorus and the band. On December 15th, the Southmoreland Elementary School Winter Concert will be at Southmoreland, 7:00 PM. The annual holiday dance sponsored by the freshman and sophomore classes was held November 22nd, 2011. Two hundred and fifty students and guests attended kickoff to the holiday season and music was provided by DJ Dyke Anderson. The following students are attending WCMEA County Band on December 1st and 2nd at Genet High School. Aaron Duggar, Sam Allenberger, Mallory Garstek, Taylor Gephardt, Connor Johnson, Elizabeth Shotts, and Sarah Tomlin. Our students finished for post and booth this year's auditions were highly competitive amongst students from every grade level, demonstrating the artistic creative skills of our students. Through December, we will hold optional rehearsals for Drama 101, where students gain confidence and learn the basics of acting. After the holiday break, rehearsals will be in full swing and sets will be built.
Okay, thank you. Under superintendent's report, I apologize, the first item I have for you is something I should have mentioned to you in executive session and neglected to do that, but it is recommended that the board accept with regrets the resignation of assistant varsity football coach Edward Jenkins effective immediately. Mr. Jenkins accepted a position as a head coach in another district.
Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Miller, second. Second by Mr. Beistel? Any question on the motion?
Is he one of Don's assistants?
Yes.
I saw it in the, I saw it in the press. Where did he go to?
Charlotte.
Charlotte, yeah, okay.
Roll call.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
I got a question about that. Now, does Don go ahead and replace him, so we have to?
Yes.
Do we have to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay.
He would approve that. Right, he'll come back, right.
But he takes care of that?
Yes.
Fix somebody?
Yes.
It's a name.
Right. Okay, the next item I have for you, it's recommended that the board employ Ariel Byers for the position of high school play co-sponsor.
So moved.
Motion? Mrs. Kaufman, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes, any question on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mrs. Mel, Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item I have for you is informational in nature. I received a notification from the Community Foundation of Westmoreland County that the Southmoreland School District will receive EITC funding through Scottdale Bank and Trust, and this year, our funding will be in the amount of $167,600. And that's a significant increase. In the past, we've received between $90,000 and $100,000. These monies will be used to upgrade technology that is used for instructional programs such as Study Island, Accelerated Reader, and other digital programs that are associated with some of our more recent curricular adoptions. We will also plan to use that money to provide additional electronic student response systems. Those are systems whereby students, each student has an electric clicker, kind of like you see on Jeopardy, so a teacher can beam a question and every student in the entire class would respond by clicking, using the smartboard to give their responses. That way, everyone has equitable response opportunity and the teacher can immediately gauge who's understanding and who's not understanding, so those are very nice systems. We have several of them in place already, and we're going to be able to purchase a few more through these monies. Scottdale Bank and Trust has also asked that some of that funding be earmarked to reinstate the elementary Learn to Swim program and to partner with Guyer Theater for both spectatorial and production activities. So we'll be telling you more about that as things unfold. As you know, Dr. Scott, Mr. Clara, and Mr. Krafcek recently presented a session at the PSBA conference in Hershey, and in your board packet, I included a copy of their evaluation synopsis. As you can see, the response to their presentation was very favorable. Most of the comments ranged in the excellent range in terms of the multiple-choice Likert Scale kinds of responses, and there were a number of open-ended responses that were very favorable. And along those same lines, Dr. Scott and Mr. Mashie recently received an email, and I'd like to share it with you, it reads like this. Let me first introduce myself. My name is Monty Lammers, and I am the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Administrator for Falcon Zone, which is a feeder pattern for the Falcon School District located in Colorado Springs, Colorado. I'm sending my middle school administrators to the ASCD Conference in Philadelphia and wanted to tag a professional learning community school visit onto their trip. While researching the All Things PLC website, I read about the successes of Southmoreland Middle School and wanted to know if you would be open to a visit from my three middle school administrators on the 19th and 20th of March. Please email or call if you have any questions. So we have three administrators from Colorado Springs, Colorado, that want to come to Scottdale to learn about what we're doing here, and I just think that's a lot for us to be proud of, and I wanted to share that with you. The next item I have for you, this is something that occurred on Saturday evening. I had the pleasure, and Mr. Lee and Mr. Alt were also in attendance, of going to a First Presbyterian Church in Greensburg and listening to the Westmoreland Choral Society perform. Well, the Westmoreland Choral Society is very good at what they do. They performed four or five holiday numbers, and then there was an intermission, and then there were a group of young people in either black pants or black slacks or black dresses and white shirts, 104 of them, I believe, to be exact, from Southmoreland Elementary and Middle School, 5th and 6th graders. Our 5th and 6th grade chorus performed for this group of people. They did, I think, four numbers? Under the direction of Megan Weitzel. They got a standing ovation and did a very, very nice job. We were quite proud of them, and I can't tell you the number of compliments I got from people that I had never seen in my life before, talking about what wonderful kids we had, not only in terms of their performance, but in terms of their behavior throughout a pretty long concert with some classical as well as popular music. So I wanted to share that with you. It was one of those opportunities we had to showcase our kids. Last item I have for you, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about a field trip that I recently took. Dr. Halfill, Mr. Porter and I were invited to testify before the House Education Committee in support of House Bill 1050. And House Bill 1050 has proposed legislation that provides temporary relief to school districts who have lost revenues due to the relocation or closing of businesses that provide funding known as payment in lieu of taxes. Now, this bill would apply to any district, and it's not just exclusive to Southmoreland. This bill is designed to amend Section 2502.16 of the Pennsylvania Public School Code of 1949, which was amended in 1988. The current 1988 language deals with temporary special aid to school districts suffering loss of tax revenue due to bankruptcy of businesses within the school district, where the money that we lost when Sony left was not tax revenue, but rather payment in lieu of tax revenue. So we presented information on November 15th dealing with our poverty figures, which would be approximately 50% of our students being on free and reduced lunch. We talked about our achievement levels, our enrollment history, our class sizes, staff and program additions and reductions, and steps that we took to mitigate the loss of the Sony revenues over the last couple of years. Unfortunately, Bill Porter was not able to attend the meeting because he was ill on that day, but the chairman of the Education Committee was very gracious, and he agreed to accept written testimony from Mr. Porter, and Mr. Porter did provide that. So I have a folder here for you, and it kind of gives you an outline of the information that we presented earlier. It gives you a copy of Mr. Porter's written testimony. There was an opposing viewpoint that was submitted to the House Education Committee. I've included that for you as well as my response to that. So Peggy will pass those out at this point in time. And that concludes my report for this evening. Yes. Oh, Mr. Salem, excuse me. Mr. Salem had some things that he wanted to go over with you.
I want to tell the board a few of the things going on in the business office. I received a call from Maureen Skyers Gibbs. She works for Standard and Poor's. Standard and Poor's is a rating agency that rates the creditworthiness of bond issuers. And it was time for our periodic review, and after she was all done, she called me back and said that her company reaffirmed our A-rating due to the stable outlook for our district. Now, in addition to that, I want to talk about business software. Since the mid-1980s, Southmoreland has relied on the intermediate unit for the financial software that runs the business office. It's a DOS-based system that's been out of date since the 1990s. At the end of this fiscal year, the IU, whom we share that software with, is no longer going to support that program. So we're going to need to get our own software, as most of the districts around us have already done. We're looking at an annual expenditure of around $20,000 a year, which is a little more than we're paying now, but I think the newer software has a lot more bells and whistles, and it's going to help the business office and all the staff to streamline functions, and hopefully, we'll be able to use that technology to work more efficiently. The Public School Employees Retirement System, referred to as PISERS, has released for the 2012-2013 fiscal year its contribution rates. The rate for the coming school year will be 12.36%. And that's, we pay 12.36% of the wages that all employees that are enrolled in PISERS, which is all public school employees, business office, teachers, custodians, everybody. Everybody that works for the school district is enrolled in the public school employees' retirement system. This year, that's 12.3, for the coming year, it's going to be 12.36%. For comparison, in 2011-2012, it was 8.65%. Earlier projections had said that it was going to be 12.19%. So this is a little bit higher than we had projected. Lastly, but not least, I want you to know that in your packet for the January 5th meeting, I'm going to have in there a preliminary budget for the school district. And the reason why you have to have a preliminary budget in your packet basically is because of Act 1. Act 1 of 2006 accelerated the budget-building process and limited a school district's ability to raise taxes. And the reason for that is if a school district wants to raise taxes above a certain limit, then it has to put it out for a referendum, and that referendum has to be on the ballot for the primary. The primary has been moved up, and that's why we have to act on a preliminary budget by January 5th, okay? When I say that we can't raise taxes above a certain limit, what that means is for this year, for 2012-13, we're not going to be able to raise taxes more than 2.4% above what the tax rate already is, okay? Anything above that has to go up for voter referendum. Now, that, we have to adopt the resolution that has to go into the Pennsylvania Department of Education, and that resolution has to be voted on by the board by January 5th. That's why you're going to have a copy of the preliminary budget for your review, and that's why we're going to be discussing this so early, before even half the school year's over, that we have to act on this. Any questions about anything I said?
What's the mileage rate on that 2.4%?
I can't tell you that.
But that's percent, not mileage.
That's percent, not mileage.
Just to throw out to the new board members, it's kind of a ridiculous thing because
Just to throw out to the new Board members, it's kind of a ridiculous thing, because you don't even know how much money you're getting from the state until like six or seven months later, depending on how long it takes them to get their budget done.
It's just preliminary.
It's preliminary. It's typically what we do is we'll present a preliminary budget, and then between January and June 30th, we'll let down to a more palatable figure.
Now, is this where, after we, when does the Board get to go through? You'll give us the whole packet, and we look through that, and we can talk and see if we want to have questions. What about this? What about that? We can take that out. Is this where we would do that, or just the finance?
Well, the, the preliminary budget is just that, it's preliminary, and all we need to do is to say that we're not going to go above the 2.4%.
Okay.
So the budget has to be below that, okay? And then from, from there to June 30th, the Board has time to pick and choose what they want to do.
So we won't see it before we're to vote on it?
No, I'm going to have, it's going to be in your packet for the next meeting.
But we won't have any meetings, or there won't be no discussion or nothing until...
Well, if you want to come in and talk to me about it, you're welcome to, but I'm working on it now.
We don't vote till the 12th?
5th. We're going to have to have a special voting meeting on the 5th, because this resolution has to be passed by them.
Do you have a met with the Finance Committee meeting to see what things you might want to add or take away?
Frankly, I'm still working on the budget.
But wouldn't it help if you were already talking to the Finance Committee?
Well...
I mean, it's other than just your input, right? Right now, it's just your input.
I'm just working on what contractually we're obligated to do and what we've spent When I say contractually obligated to do, you know, we have, we have contracts with most of the staff, and, and I'm just plugging those numbers in, and then...
But what I'm asking is, if, if we're now being pushed to a certain date, shouldn't we have been maybe a few months ago, meeting to take a look at your budget?
Well...
Give you some ideas of what the Board may or may not want?
A few months ago was the beginning of the school year, and I think as ridiculous as it is that we have to have a preliminary budget approved by January 5th, six months before the end of school.
Yeah, but we do, so...
We had this last year, too.
Mr. Alt, what our plan right now is, is on the 5th of January, to pass a preliminary budget that says we do not intend to raise taxes over the index, and that's it.
That's all.
And that doesn't mean you're raising taxes or you're not raising taxes.
I understand that, but when the public reads that in the newspaper, they anticipate tax rates.
Right, and then between January and June, that's when we really start to do the, the actual budget work.
Because I think we had talked about this, or had been talked about when I was not on the Board, that there would be meetings beforehand to give input to the business manager, to help him make his, his budget.
There, there was some discussion to that effect.
Not after the fact, but before the fact.
Bill, when you were, you were sitting there, you made the statement that you wanted guidelines from the Board.
Well, mind you, this is just a preliminary budget, and I'm just plugging the numbers in to, to see where we're at, so we don't have to raise taxes above the 2.4%.
I think, yeah.
After, after we had the preliminary budget finished, then the Board can make recommendations of reductions they like to make.
This is a bizarre statement, but suppose you had enough Board members who wanted to go above the 2.4%? What would you do then if you locked yourself in? Because we haven't talked about anything.
And you vote against the preliminary budget?
I think it's hard for you to be able to, you have to make decisions.
Again, he's not making decisions on his own. He's got Dr. Scott, he's got myself, he's got the principals, and we've been...
Have you been meeting with the men on that?
Yeah.
I think we talked about it the last before, was to let Bill do his job here, and we weren't going to micromanage him. We were going to let him present that, and then we were going to come together and decide after.
Didn't you also sit on something at Hershey where they said it's unheard of for the Board members to be involved?
That one through the Hemfield School District. That's how they work.
Hemfield.
Hemfield East.
Not to belittle anybody, but Hemfield, his daughter...
Not our Hemfield.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Out East, yeah.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
It's the Hemfield School District, not the Hemfield Area School.
Okay.
I was confused.
Because they have not been peeking at our financial...
This is, this is a good step, because we really do have between January then, I mean, that's why we have staff here to bring us the proposals, and we have between January and May to, to work on it, to work on it further.
Well, in my opinion, this is a starting point. We have to let Mr. Salem present us with a starting point, in my opinion.
That's all it is.
Exactly.
Any other questions for Mr. Salem? It was brought to my attention, after I became President, that there's going to be a meeting of the negotiations between the SCA and the school district on December 15th at...
6:00 P.M.
6:00 o'clock. And so a committee needs to be put together for negotiating committee, and that committee will be Chairman, Mr. Benz, Mr. Alt, if you accept?
I'll have to decline. My tax business prevents me from devoting the time that's going to be needed for that. I appreciate it, but I can't devote the time to it.
Mrs. Kaufman? You accept? Mr. Miller?
Sure, unless you have... Nelson's wanting to step forward here.
And I'll give another person a call to figure out the fourth person, since Mr. Alt is not able to do it.
How often are they, how often are they meeting, or you have no idea?
You remember, three years ago, there's times where you meet every couple of days, and there's times where you go weeks and weeks without meeting, so it's hard to tell from last, remember, three years ago, we did it?
To date, the meetings have been rather sporadic.
You have some experience on it, don't you, when you...
Yeah. I mean, I hate to pass, pass the opportunity up, but, okay...
Do you want to, do you want to think about it and call me?
Yeah, let me think about it, and give me a call when you have to know, if you have to know before next meeting, or...
Well, I have to know before next meeting, because we're meeting on the 15th of December.
Okay, give me a day or two to think about it.
Okay, you want to call me?
Yes, I'll call.
Okay.
That meeting will be held at the Administration Building.
Any citizens' comments?
We do have one citizen comment, Marcy Benz.
Hi, I have two issues. The first one came up just this past week with my daughter. I called the high school today and really was not happy with the response. I had to pull Mariah out of school last Wednesday, about 10:00 after 2:00 for doctor appointment in Pittsburgh. She went to gym class that period. She showed her gym teacher her gym bag, and so I have my clothes. Do I get dressed or don't I get dressed? She says a gym teacher called Mr. Thompson, who advised her not to get dressed, so she didn't. I picked her up in the office, she gets in a current, says I have to make up a gym class. So I called today and was told by Mrs. Thompson that Mr. Thompson said if she'd have been dressed, she didn't have to make up the class. Well, she had her clothes there and was advised by him not to get dressed. I'm really upset that my child, who is playing basketball...
This really is, is something more of a personnel, I'm sorry, not personnel, but an issue that either would be handled by an appeal to the administrator above that person, or a request to have an executive session with the Board. If you have, I don't know where you are, with whom you've last discussed it, but it should go to the next person in line before it comes to the school board.
Well, I have, I have another question regarding that. Is there a reason why, and I've heard this happen with other districts, I don't know, I tried to call them, and to be honest, I couldn't reach anybody. If your child is playing a full-time sport, I'm talking football, baseball, basketball, track, is that a requirement that they also? I guess I'm asked if we could waive the requirement for them actually to attend a half an hour, 40-minute gym period if they're going to be at a practice two hours that night, and let them have that as a study hall instead of a required gym class? It's a question that maybe we could consider for future reference, I don't know. I mean, I'm thinking she's, and not only her, but it's all the athletes, you know what I mean? She would do better with a study hall during her gym than getting dressed to play badminton and coming home 10 o'clock at night and starting homework. So it's just food for thought from a mom's point of view, for a student that, I don't know if that's something we can do or not do. And Shelby's lived that life, too, where you're, you're getting in late and starting homework, and it's, I don't know, I think it'd be good for all the athletes. The other issue, can I see the hands of the people that attended the PSBA conference in October? Dr. Pike, did you also attend the PSBA conference?
I went to the IU, I didn't go for...
Well, Josie went for the vote tech, right?
Yeah.
So you were still representative on the Board at that conference?
Well, but not for the district. You can't represent two things, Marcy. You have to...
I, I understand that, but she went as a vote tech. What I'm getting at is everyone told where they went and what they did, but Dr. Pike, we didn't hear anything from you on what, what items you attended there, and I think as a citizen of the district, you're on the school board, you're on the IU as representative, I think you should also give an account of what you did with our tax dollars while you were in Hershey.
Well, I do that under my IU report.
Okay, so we don't have a right to hear that here?
Well, when I give my IU report, I have a whole folder here, actually. Marcy, you want my folder?
No, I, I would just like you to give an account of everything else.
See, that's his IU report for trump of it, okay? It's in here. I give it as part of the IU, because they pay the expenses, and they ask me to attend certain meetings and so forth, so that's part of the IU report.
So you won't tell everybody where you went and what you did?
Yeah, when I give the IU report.
Okay.
Here, I give one here.
Okay.
It's part of the agenda.
There's not one this month's agenda, because it's a special meeting.
When I give my next IU report, that's part of it.
I just expected when everyone said what they did, that she would also give hers. That was my interpretation, so...
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else from anyone else on the floor? Any other citizens' comments?
I have one comment, out of respect for Sam. He called me this afternoon, and he asked me to, to ask Dr. Monar that, about this. He received a phone call saying that in fact, he was blind in the school newspaper, and it was not true. And he did receive a phone call, and he was told that there will be a retraction and a full apology. And he asked me that since he's no longer on the Board, if I would ask you to please notify him when that occurs.
I will do that.
Thank you.
As a matter of fact, I'll send him a copy of the paper.
That would be good. Sure, he'd appreciate that.
Anything else?
How often do they come out?
Four times a year.
Yeah.
Is that right now?
Usually.
Motion to adjourn, adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Rhodes, second.
Mr. Rhodes.
Second by Mrs. Kaufman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, everybody.